Mr. Wildsworth, would you do the pleasure of leashing the flag?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable City Council, Mayor Burcroft, Honorable elected officials, administrative staff and listening audience. Today's date is February first, 2021. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting, and this meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID is eight, three, two, two, six, eight, three, six, six, nine, eight. And this meeting is being held in accordance with Public Act two, two, eight, subsection three, A, section two, which allows a meeting of a public body to be conducted electronically in a manner that permits two-way communication so that the members of the public body can hear and be heard. This is also in accordance with the Remote Participation in Public Meetings Policy adopted by City Council on December twenty eighth, 2020, Resolution Number twenty dash three fifty five. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online, again, using the Zoom meeting application. The raise hand method will be used to acknowledge those wishing to speak during public comment. If you've called in, press the star nine to utilize the raise hand indication that you would like to speak. To call in, that phone number is six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. During the public comment portion of the meeting, those citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of that portion of the meeting. And at this time, refer to the agenda. And Mr. Chair, Council, there was a special meeting study session at six o'clock. Roll call was taken during that time in which we had a quorum. And during this meeting, all members are present, and we do have a quorum for this regular meeting.
Thank you.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerk's report, seven treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven communication, and number twelve adjournment. And a motion been ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the agenda as presented.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Your votes yes, motion approved.
Number two, the minutes for approval are the minutes from the meeting held on January twenty fifth, 2021 at seven thirty P. M.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that um, that we approve the minutes from January twenty fifth, 2021.
Been motioned by Mr. Wildsworth. Who supported that?
Ms. Webb.
Ms. Webb, okay. Supported by Ms. Webb for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on January twenty fifth, 2021 at seven thirty P. M. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
For approval of the minutes from the special meetings held on January twenty fifth, 2021 at five thirty P. M., there was a closed session to discuss an attorney opinion. And at six o'clock P. M., there was a study session to discuss the economic development tools and incentives. Motion would be in order.
So moved for the approval of the minutes from January twenty fifth, 2021.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for the minutes, approval of the minutes from a special meeting, January twenty fifth, 2021. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
A chair votes yes, and motion is approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda this evening. That takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At uh, six o'clock P. M. study session, we had to discuss the truck route and maps. I have a letter, I have a thank you card from uh, Gwynn Luen Braxton. And this is to all the council members. And this is uh, your kind and thoughtful expression of sympathy and is deeply appreciated and gratefully acknowledged. And this is the family of Ralph Bell. And that's to all the council. Thank you. At this time, your chair gonna recognize our councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion for a resolution, if I can get support, to recognize and honor our former councilman Booker Edwards.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. I'd like to recognize and honor uh, Mr. Our former councilman Booker Edwards for his service and dedication from nineteen seventy through nineteen seventy-three and thereafter until his death. His dedication to the Junction subdivision community as well as the entire city of Romulus. This being Black History Month, I feel it is long overdue to shine a spotlight on a leader whose accomplishments and impact will inspire many generations to come.
Support.
It's been uh, motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wildsworth for a resolution for Mr. Booker Edwards.
Mr. Barden?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wildsworth.
If I could just expand on Mr. Edwards. We were friends from nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy, until he passed away. And the nineteen seventy election, I walked Mr. Edwards to the Oakbrook Sub going door to door as he, as he um campaigned. And as we're well aware, he did win that year. And then thirteen years later, in nineteen eighty-three, the first time I ran, um, Mr. Edwards took me through his neighborhood, and I was fortunate enough to win. And then again, in ninety-five, he ran again for council, and we uh, both of us um campaigned together. He was a good, decent man, good decent man. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wildsworth. I totally agree. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Now the chair is gonna recognize uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Hello, good evening. I, I received so many calls, and so I came up with maybe a, a solution. Different residents, um, I told them we would not like Fox Two or Channel Four where every morning they announce so many different residents regardless of where they live uh, for their birthdays. So I would like to acknowledge the City of Romulus residents that birthday or will be celebrating their anniversary in the month of February. And starting this month of February and each month after, happy birthday to those especially in the month of February. For um, and hopefully that it will be a blessed birthday and also a blessed anniversary. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Barden?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wildsworth.
If, if I could, I like to uh, pass a resolution and um, it's um, um, giving um, good wishes in the future to Lois Gilstar. Um, this past week, she um, she finally, she finally left City Hall after forty years. And uh, she had more time than me here. And um, you know, she really was a person that worked in many departments. And over the course of the years, I had occasion to talk to her and ask for certain things, and she always was good and give me the, give me the information. And uh, she was a, she was a good worker, a good worker, and she should be recognized with a resolution from us signed for her forty years.
I support that.
Yes, definitely.
Who supported?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Just web.
I put everybody, but I, I put one person.
I uh, and if I may say so through the chair, I've known Lois since nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four. And you know, sometimes when we recognize people, we will, you know, have it sort of generic. But I'm gonna tell you, Lois Gilstar, and I'm gonna use a word, was this, is the sweetest employee. And I cared for all my employees, with all the employees, but Lois is special. She's always been special. She has such compassion, not only for her job, but for the people around her. And she is, she's just a sweetheart. And I just wanna say kudos.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mayor Burcroft uh, would like to have remarks.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Bear, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and uh, Clerk. I just wanted to comment on Lois. I mean, she, I don't think people realize uh, you know, how much we're gonna miss her till we miss her. She had a wealth of knowledge about uh, H R, uh, contracts, things over the years that um, you know, we drew on, on a regular basis. And, and I echo all the comments that everybody said, awesome person, awesome worker. Uh, but you know, she came back uh, to help us kind of part-time at the end when we were in a tough situation. So um, Lois, thank you. We love you. We're gonna miss you, and we wish you the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
John?
Yes, uh, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I, I was introduced to uh, Lois in the nineties. And she is, uh, she is a very kind-hearted person. I've never heard or seen her yelling or screaming or even being upset. And so, you know, I send my blessings to her, and I wish the best uh, in her endeavors. Thank you.
John, Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
I just wanna uh, send uh, Lois all good wishes in her retirement. And uh, she's truly gonna be missed. Very, very, very nice lady. She's gonna be missed by a lot of people.
Thank you. So Lois, you hear that? You are loved by a lot of people. And you, that's what good people is about, love. Uh, if there's no other comments, roll call vote. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report. Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Five is the mayor's report.
Uh, good evening to uh, all our electeds and to uh, our staff and also those listening at home. Uh, no quote tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to roll out uh, quickly a new program that's going on. Many of you know that uh, there's some restrictions that were lifted on uh, local restaurants now. Uh, and so what we're doing is uh, and this will be hitting the presses uh, right after I announce this on social media and other ways. But in a way to support our local restaurants, uh, the Community Development Department's hosting a contest uh, to help support local businesses. So here's the way it's gonna work. Uh, shoppers who spend fifty dollars or over uh, one of those local restaurants, they will enter into raffle uh, to win a, a twenty-five dollar gift card worth raffle. Uh, so we'll, we'll be sending this out with an email uh, and how it's gonna be handled. Uh, the phone number, uh, if the people do have calls uh, before that will be seven, three, four, nine, four, two, seven, five, four, five. And I do wanna make note that the gift cards are sponsored and donated by the Romulus employees. Uh, so this is a way just to stimulate more activity. A lot of these businesses are really hurting. Uh, so please uh, to our, our employees, to our residents uh, and other businesses, help the local restaurants. This is a difficult time. Thank you for that. Uh, I do have one action item tonight, also, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You've already seen the budget amendment on this one, but this is the request uh, from Mike Laskaska, our Communication and um, uh, Community Services Director, Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, and this uh, request is to concur with the administration award uh, RFP twenty slash twenty-one dash zero four to Thaulner Electric Electronics Lab, doing business as Tel Systems. That's for updating the city council chambers, A V, and presentation systems. Uh, the amount's a hundred and nineteen thousand, one forty-four and thirty-six cents. Uh, there is an additional on a project like this, a typical fifteen percent contingency, which is about seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one and sixty-five cents to use for any unforeseen items that come up. Uh, as you know, the budget amendment was already done, so these funds have been verified and budgeted out of the Cable Fund Capital Outlay Expense Account that's listed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and award RFP twenty slash twenty-one dash oh four to Thaulner Electronics Labs, D B A.
Support.
Thank you.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for RFP twenty slash twenty-one dash oh four for the concentrate A V Presentation System Improvements. End of discussion.
Yeah, through the chair, just a couple of quick things. It, Mike is on a thing. So we had site visits, of course, because of the type of proposal it is. Where the five proposals received, the, they actually did the site visit where those the only site visits conducted with those five proposals we received, and we're opening in public session, in this public open meeting, Zoom meeting.
I'm not sure if Mike you or uh, Gary can answer that one.
Yes, the uh, uh, good evening, City Council. Uh, the, the, the proposals that we received, all of those companies did come and do a site visit. We, we had, I think, eleven site visits in total, but we only have five proposals back.
There was eleven, okay. And just a minor note, um, Mike, I know you're a new director and all, but I, I, I talk about my age and eyes on here sometimes, and this detail, uh, 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 it was painful. It was painful. So I got through it though, but um, I mean, just, just for the future, we can just blow it up a little bit further. That would be helpful. I, I, I got age and eyes.
It, it was quite a bit on there on one page.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Thanks, Mike.
If there's no other comments, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Counselor. Concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well done.
Righty. That takes us to number six. The clerk's report. And uh, let's see, under six A, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen, cable um, for the council chambers audio visual remodel in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This budget amendment was introduced at the regular council mid-meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe?
Second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen for the cable.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wildsworth, for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen cable. End of discussion. Here is no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. And uh, our city treasurer wanted me to let you know she's not uh, she didn't join the meeting this evening, but she just wanted me to let everybody know she didn't have her, she didn't have a report this evening, which takes us to um, number eight, and this is public comment. And uh, this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. Um, the raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Uh, remember to tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself when you, um, after you've been acknowledged. If you've dialed in from a touchstone phone, press the star nine uh, from your phone to raise your hand. And remember to press star six to mute and unmute yourself. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. And any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. For the record, please state your name after you've been acknowledged. Um, and as a reminder, citizens may um, also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I do have two hands raised, um, Mr. Chair.
All right.
And um, I believe this person is Mr. Heinberger. He had raised his hand earlier, and I didn't see it here. And um, I'm hoping that this is who uh, this is at this time. Okay, go ahead. If, uh, the last four digits nineteen fifty-three, and please identify yourself.
Yes, Ellen, it is Tony Heinberger.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I apologize. Yeah, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
That's no problem. Good evening. As we all know, this pandemic has seemed to have been going on forever now. And with the new mutations and variants here in the state of Michigan, we need to be concerned. Romulus gets a lot of people from all over the world coming through our town, which puts our city at risk. We have lost family and friends and have missed seeing and being with family and friends. Unfortunately, there are still some people that believe this virus slash pandemic is fake. Well, it is not. As citizens of this city, we need to watch out for each other so that maybe this summer we can be with our family and friends. What we are asking for, who do we contact if we see a business not following the rules and regulations? For example, mask mandate, over limit at bars, restaurants, et cetera. We must protect ourselves and our city. So once again, who do we contact? And where will that list be located? On T V, City Hall, cable, where? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, the next hand raised, uh, Gina Stewart. Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Gina Wilson Stewart. I do remember, I think it was the last city council meeting where uh, Ms. Clerk, you mentioned about a study session that was gonna be held on some charter amendments. And I just needed to know one quick question. Are the study sessions open to the public or are they closed to just the uh, city council?
No, it'll be an open meeting. Yes, it will be open to the public.
Okay, so we'll be able to attend. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much. That's all I needed to know.
You're welcome. Um, let's see, those were the only two hands raised, Mr. Chair. And I don't, I'm gonna just do one more look-through, make sure I didn't miss anybody. And it looks like that's it.
That's it. If that's all, Madam Clerk, we close that part out.
Alrighty. Takes us to number nine, uh, which is unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'll respond to the one request about who to report to uh, from Mr. Tony Heinberger. Um, typically, we refer complaints to the Wayne County Health Department. Uh, for those, uh, we can provide that information to him. Uh, and I would encourage him to, to do that. I, I can say that not, you know, they, they're handling those requests. I also heard just recently that uh, the prosecutor was dropping a lot of charges that they had from twenty twenty. Uh, but once we uh, turn it over to them, it is their authority uh, to make sure that they're operating within the governor's order. But we'll provide that contact uh, to him and the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more unfinished business? Takes us to number ten, new business.
John?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wildsworth?
Uh, if I could, I'd like a uh, resolution for a no-fee permit for a garage sale weekend. And let's hope that things are open up by June, for June the third, fourth, fifth and sixth. And the following weekend would be the rainout, which would be the tenth, eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for a no-fee permit. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
You're way ahead of us, Mr. Wildsworth. We were planning to put that on the agenda next week for both the spring and the winter.
I must have had ten phone calls since the last meeting. And you know, last year was kind of a big flop. You couldn't do it. And so I told these folks, I would make sure that it was put on.
Right, no worries. We, we had already had dates. We were gonna bring it. But so next week, what we'll do, we'll bring the dates uh, to you with regards to um, the, the fall uh, garage sale, okay? All right, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that takes us to number eleven, communication.
John?
Yes, uh, Ms. Roscoe?
I would just like to remind everyone that we got the curling roy- roy- royale coming up real soon here. Um, on February twentieth, a couple of weeks, let's hope for a cold weekend so we have some ice. Uh, it'll be from twelve to three at Marianne Banks's Park. Um, they need teams. Registration's fifteen dollars per person. But if you don't have a team, show up. They'll stick you somewhere and, and let you play. Uh, for more information, call seven, three, four, nine, four, two, seven, five, seven, one. And again, all the donations go to um, fund different things within the community. And I'm not real sure exactly where they're designating it this year, but it's always for a very, very good cause. But come on out, have some fun. And if you don't wanna play, just come on out and hang out and, and um, eat some food. There'll be refreshments and snacks and, and just have a good time. And for some reason, if, if it isn't a go on the twentieth, the following weekend on February twenty-seventh, they'll try it again. But come on out on February twentieth to Marianne Banks's Park and, and hang out, have some fun.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I assume that masks will be required. Am I right, Celeste?
Oh, yes. You know, all the social distancing and the mask requirements and it, it'll be so cold out there, you'll wanna wear your mask. You'll wanna have a scarf on.
Maybe in the ads that they have seen running, they should put that on there. That mask.
And this, and this year, I apologize for not uh, bringing this up um, and, and not having it readily available. But this year, all the proceeds of this event will help the Great Lakes Burn Camp for kids.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'm sorry, I, Mr. Chair, Robert McCray is on, uh, would like to speak and kind of elaborate a little bit more on this event. All right, Mr. McCray, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. And thanks, Celeste, for bringing that up again. And uh, um, yes, Councilman Abdo, um, all C D C requires will be, will be addressed. We'll have personal protection and sanitizers available to those who need it. And we'll make sure it'll be as socially distant as possible. And uh, yeah, the cause, it's uh, important to Kevin Cross and myself, uh, the Great La- Great Lakes Burn Camp for children. It's children who've been dis- disfigured by fire and one form or other. And they have a camp uh, for two weeks. It's no charge to these kids. They can go to, and they can be around the kids who, who suffer from the same affliction. You know, they're not gonna have that issue where they're stared at or people looking at them in a, in a different manner. Um, so we thought it'd be good to, maybe we could throw uh, some dollars at it and get a couple scholarships uh, to fund some of these kids who are less fortunate, don't have the funds to attend a camp like that. uh, to fund some of these kids who are less fortunate, don't have the funds to attend a camp like that. So that's, uh, what we're gonna do, and, and we're teaming up with, uh, our friends over at Belfour. And hopefully we can, like I said, raise enough to send a, a kid to camp.
Thank you, Mr. McCray.
Thank you.
Any more communication?
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, uh, just a couple of quick thing, um, last week, uh, some of my colleagues brought up about resources, um, to help during a pandemic. We are, as, uh, Mr. Heimberger said, this thing is serious. Um, and one of the things, as I've been talking about the last several weeks, is, um, our kids, our kids. Um, and so, um, the clerk's office put in our, uh, in our package, and this is just a reminder, 'cause this has been brought up before, about Comcast and a program they have called Internet Essentials, um, which is, uh, has become a nation's largest and most successful low-income broadband adoption program. It has connected millions of people to the internet at home. It offers households with low-cost internet service for nine ninety-five a month, plus taxes and fees, the option to purchase a heavily subs- heavily subsidized computer and multiple options for free digital literacy training. Um, Comcast is providing sixty days of free internet essential service for qualifying low-income families that sign up before June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and the company has increased speeds for all new and existing internet essential customers at no additional cost. Um, thank you again for the clerk's office, because as I'm moving forward with a team of people, as we're trying to help our kids with virtual learning centers. So this is good to have, because I saw the list of organizations that have been, um, have benefited from this program, um, to help kids with virtual learning. Um, so again, I just wanna shout out to people, um, the city still has the information posted on the website. If you have, uh, responded to the survey we posted about a virtual learning center, you will be think, be receiving a response, uh, regarding that process. But again, we gotta make sure our kids, um, it's difficult for them, um, right now, and we don't want them to get left behind. So, um, I just wanna shout that out for people that are having an issue with internet. I think this is a great thing Comcast is doing to make sure people are connected. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes. I had a resident to text me, and they would like to know, is it a certain number, uh, of folks that can gather at one time? Anyone has that answer?
This is a, together for?
Since the governor, uh, you know, as of today, you know, in, in large groups. So is there a number that, Mayor, if we can get that out to the residents?
We'll get that out. I don't wanna misquote it, 'cause it just changed today. I know it's twenty-five percent for the, uh, food facilities, but we'll get that number out, 'cause it was just, uh, effective as of today.
Okay, and also, uh, through the chair, I would just like to thank the, um, Books for Benefit, they're donating nine thousand brand-new books to Romulus. So I would just like to say thank you to them, and also remind the residents, forgotten harvest is still at the high school from twelve and two, uh, until the food stuff, every Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more communication from City Council? Okay, if not, that takes us to number twelve, adjournment at eight oh four.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for adjournment. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a great evening, everyone.